Very good evening to all. We are welcoming you all to the session three aquaculture new direction. In the session three, first we would like to invite our chairperson Dr. Princeton George Sir. Please occupy the dice, sir. And also, we would like to invite our second chairperson, Dr. Celia R. Levelo-Pitako. Celia, madam? Yeah, please, please occupy the dice. And we would like to invite our lead speaker, Dr. Rohana Subhasinhe. Please come to the dice, sir. And also, we would like to welcome Dr. Aparna Chautry, madam, to be the rapporteur for this session. And here it is our, it's our privilege to introduce our chairperson. Dr. Princeton George Sir is currently Director of ICR Central Marine Fisheries Research Institute, Kochi. Dr. George is a distinguished marine scientist whose pioneering work spans fisheries oceanography, marine ecosystem studies, remote sensing and climate change. He has been instrumental in developing potential fishing zones, adversaries, coral reef beaching alerts, water quality adversaries, empowering citizens through science and technology. With an impressive publication record, eighty-six peer-reviewed papers, twenty-nine books, eleven policy briefs and more than a hundred conference subjects. He also serves as a reviewer for twenty international journals and sits on multiple editorial boards. His global collaborations span institutions such as European Space Agency, FAO, UN CBD, UN CARDIP, SARC, NERC, CFAS and PML. He has contributed to research initiatives across Europe, Asia and Australia and continues to serve on expert panels of UN, SEDUP, POGO and onward. We welcome you, sir. And it is also our privilege to introduce our second chairperson, Dr. Celia R. Levelo-Pitako. Dr. Celia R. Levelo-Pitako is a renowned aquatic animal health specialist with decades of impactful research in shrimp pathology and biossecurity. Formerly a senior scientist at SEBDAC Aquaculture Department in the Philippines. She currently serves as Director of Aquatic Animal Health and Integrated Aquaculture International. Her pioneering work has focused on bacterial and microsporadine diseases in pinates shrimp, including vibrio harvey and enterocytosis and hepatopinegy, a parasite linked to growth retardation in farmed shrimp. Dr. Pitago has developed diagnostic protocols using histopathology, PCR-based molecular tools and microscopy, contributing to improved hatchery and farm management practices. She has co-authored numerous peer-reviewed publications and contributed to international aquatic health strategies, including FAO-led biosecurity frameworks. Her expertise continues to shape disease mitigation approaches across Southeast Asia's aquaculture sector. We welcome you, ma'am. Now, we would like to hand over the session to chairperson to take over this, conduct the session, sir.
Good evening, all of you. I am deeply honored to chair one of the important technical sessions of DAA12 here. First of all, warm welcome to Dr. Rohana Subhasinhe here. I have a brief biography of Dr. Rohana here. I am chairing along with Dr. Celia Pitago. Welcome, madam, to this session and welcome all of you to this session. We are just delving into a very important topic on the way forward for aquaculture with emphasis on African continent. And I definitely believe that this is going to be an insightful session where we will be discussing some potential strategies and innovative plans for the development of aquaculture across the continent. So we are, we are really delighted to have Dr. Rohana Subhasinhe. He is a global expert in aquaculture development and aquatic animal health, who retired as Chief of the Aquaculture Branch at Food and Agriculture Research Institution in 2015, after a distinguished career spanning over two decades. A graduate of the University of Colombo with a PhD from Sterling University. He has worked extensively across Asia and globally, leading numerous national and international projects on aquaculture and health management. A passionate advocate for sustainable aquaculture and small-scale value chains. He played a key role in developing FAO's globally endorsed technical guidelines on aquaculture certification and served as Technical Secretary to the FAO Subcommittee on Aquaculture. Formerly a faculty member of the University of Colombo and University of Putra Malaysia, he continues to contribute as a consultant to international agencies promoting socially responsible and environmentally sustainable aquaculture. We are thankful for the expertise of Dr. Rohana Subhasinhe. Before asking him to take over, I wish, if the vice chair would like to say some comments, I pass on the mic to her.
If there is one person in Asia who has been a pillar of fish health, we have the man, Dr. Rohana Subhasinhe.
Thank you, ma'am. Over to you, sir.
Right. Good afternoon, good evening. This is tomorrow, right? Thank you so much for the long introduction. Most of you of the same age category, I guess, and we know each other very well. Asian Fisheries Science Society Fish Health Section. It's our, it was our dream and it has come through and we're very happy to be here today. Thank you Kuldeep for accommodating me to talk about nothing but fish health. I'm not going to talk about fish health for the next thirty minutes because we heard about fish health from yesterday until little while ago and I thought probably the time to break the monotony, take you somewhere else. Though I worked on aquatic animal health and aquaculture with FAO, around 2010, I took my hat of aquatic animal health off and put it on top of Melba's hat. So she continued the legacy and she did much better than me past ten years and she continued and she just stopped formally, but perhaps not informally. So Aquatic Animal Health will, from what we hear today and yesterday, has taken a quantum leap of scientific advancement and the knowledge and we can see where we are compared to twenty years ago, where we were. I retired from FAO in 2015 and I had the opportunity to work with Mohan and the group with world fish for about seven, eight years and my main focus was Africa. And a couple of years ago, I also left world fish and I'm on my own with another colleague and we are working on aquaculture, not necessarily aquatic animal health, but looking into aquaculture's opportunities and contributions to the rest of the world. Our focus at the moment is Africa and because Africa needs more fish and Africa is lacking the ability to produce fish. So over the next twenty-five to twenty-eight minutes, I'm trying to take you to Africa and to show you where the opportunities are and where we are. I don't need to read this. We all are here because we know this. You eat more fish. Thank you. Two thousand fifteen, fourteen and two thousand twenty-two, we know that whoever reads FAO's Sophia, which I used to contribute for its preparations. In two thousand fourteen, we global aquaculture production surpassed the wild capture fisheries. And two thousand twenty-two, global aquaculture production surpassed the capture fisheries as the primary sort of source of aquatic animal production. So in other words, as I always say, when I joined FAO in nineteen ninety, I said, "One out of every five fish you eat come from aquaculture." Today, I say, "One out of every two fish that you come, eat, come from aquaculture." Just to show you how the aquaculture production changed over the years between global China, Asia and Africa. Just to show you how small the Africa is compared to the China compared to Asia. So we are talking about a continent where the, probably the population is highest with the least production increase and the growth of aquaculture in a continent. So overall, total fisheries and aquaculture production has seen important increases in most of the continents. However, although we are talking about seven percent increase in Africa, I can go and show you how quiet it is still. If you look at the Africa and Asia, its growth rate, very interesting. The Africa's, Asia's growth rate remained between five and six and, you know, sort of fluctuated a little bit up and down, but remained almost the same. But whereas in Africa, it goes up and down, it oscillates so much, right? What's the reasons? There are a million reasons for that, right? And it goes up in around, around two thousand ten, everybody started putting money into aquaculture development in Africa. All major donors, USAID, the World Bank, you name it, and the production went up. You pull the plug out, after three years, all the ponds go dry, unfortunately. So it is in the downhill at the moment. The, so aquatic animal, if you look at, I think we know this story. From four, two thousand, from forty-three million to two thousand twenty-two, hundred and thirty million aquaculture production, whereas the aquatic animals from thirty-two to ninety-four million and three times increase in aquatic, aquatic plants. And you can see there's different regions showing huge differences in the scale of aquaculture production and its growth. Africa produced about twenty-three million tons of farmed aquatic animal species in two thousand twenty-two. An increase of only fifty thousand tons over past two, three years. For a continent, a bigger than Asia. Net increase came mainly from inland aquaculture, mostly from Ghana, Zambia, Tanzania and Rwanda. And if you look at the arrows at the end, you can see Africa is increasing. If you increase from hundred to two hundred, it is a hundred percent increase, but it is very different compared to Asia and Africa, right? And Africa is the only region that suffered a contraction of production during two thousand twenty after COVID. That was FAO's observation. In twenty-one, global apparent consumption of aquatic animal foods was hundred and sixty-two million tons. It's up from only twenty-eight million tons from two thousand, sorry, from nineteen sixty-one. On average, we eat about twenty-one point three kilograms of fish per person per year. If you look at this table, you can see the Europe and Africa probably the same level of consumption, but per capita consumption is half of, in Africa, because the population is double, right? So you cannot be too happy that, you know, we probably consume sixteen point million tons, but then per capita is very less. So we are talking about a very different continent compared to Asia and compared to other regions. The, the products, aquatic animal, I don't have to say, show that this is, this comes from FAO's publication. Most traded food commodity, right? Whereas it's a very significant increase over the past years and the, and it's moved from one place to the other and that's the very reason why we are producing more and more for the international markets. By third, twenty thirty-two, we believe we need two hundred and five million tons of fish. An increase from hundred and eighty-five to two hundred and five million, a ten percent increase, just to keep and maintain the twenty-one point three kilograms per capita per person consumption. And if you look at this, this is where the problem. In order to keep that consumption, for Africa region has to produce seventy-four percent more fish than they make today in ten years. Whereas, sorry, by twenty fifty. Whereas if you take some other regions, you don't, you don't need that much. So can Africa produce and increase its production by seventy-five percent over next, how many, fifteen years or twenty-five years? Very unlikely, very, very, very unlikely. And so there's a huge supply gap and there are many production challenges. There are very significant investment requirements and there's a huge import dependency for fish in Africa. And that lack of fish, not eating enough fish and reducing the consumption of fish will lead to severe nutritional risks for human health. Here comes the small holders. That's my favorite. Small holder fish farmers typically, very small holders in Africa, even smaller than Asia, even smaller than Bangladesh and India and, you know, sort of this part of the world. They produce about half fifty-two thousand kilograms per hectare per year. So you talk about one ton per hectare, right? You're not even talking about one ton per hectare for aquaculture in this part of the world. Global dominance, ninety percent of the fish workers, aquaculture workers are small holders. In Nigeria, in Africa, ninety-five percent of aquaculture is done by small holders. African small holders are much smaller than the Asian small holders and Latin American small holders. The key challenges for small holder farmers often operate below potential productivity and production. Their productivity is extremely low, right? The challenge to improve and increase production for Africa and to make, get these small holders an additional penny in the pocket is to help them to increase productivity. If you increase productivity, you don't need additional land, you don't need to expand and you increase production and you increase income. So interventions that focus on small holder farmers can play a critical role in increasing fish supply, right? And as I said, Africa is highly dependent on imports. Nigeria itself produce about three hundred tons of fish and import one point one billion dollars worth fish. One point one billion dollars worth fish is imported. All fish which are cheap marine fish. This is a simple comparison between a maize farmer and an aquaculture is in Africa. A maize farmer, of course, in aquaculture, you need a higher capital intervention, capital investment. But if you look at small holder maize farmers, profit per month per acre is seven dollars. Whereas a small holder fish farmer, a farmer who has a tilapia pond, has a profit of per month per acre for hundred and fifty dollars. So we are talking about two hundred percent increase in income by introducing fish to this maize mindset. Not easy. For maize is easy because they love it, right? Fish is, yes, we like it, but we don't have money, right? Three, where do the seed come from? Where do the skills come from? I don't know how to farm fish, right? Very simple statements. I think that means a lot. You have two types of fish in Africa. First is tilapia, most produced species tilapia. We are talking about producing three hundred and sixty-four million tons of tilapia. Farming systems are very, very extensive, very, very resource poor. There are corporate fish farms in Africa, handful. There are big boys operating, but very handful. Second is the African catfish. African catfish, we produce about two hundred and forty thousand tons and its good value, by having said that, it's also in pockets in Africa and the total five point seven million tons, sorry, value. And this most significant challenge is that catfish requires a high protein diet. The diets is expensive, feed is expensive. If you look at this, we are talking about aquaculture by twenty thirty, a market of third, three hundred and fifteen billion dollars globally. If you look at how much money we are talking about so-called blue economy, we are talking about two point five trillion dollars of money globally going into the blue economy. How many people relying on blue economy? In our estimate, it's about eight hundred million, right? For two point five trillion dollars of blue economy funding. And venture capital investments in two thousand twenty-four for aquaculture is little hun, six hundred million dollars. I'm just going to show you how much is available, where the focus is, where the need is, what are we doing? If you look at Africa, the list shows you where the needs are. We are right from Nigeria to, to Liberia. These are based on certain criteria where might be the most important, most significant requirement for increase in fish in, in Africa. Some of this work is based on the work that we Future Fish did with the Gates Foundation over the past two years, getting a basic understanding of the role of aquaculture in Africa, the role of aquaculture in the small holders and the, and the society in Africa. We came up with ten challenges based on the assessments that we made during the last two years. Believe me, these challenges are no different from Asia. We kind of started laughing, kind of fabbergasted to see what the list looked like. It's the same list that you and I have been talking about for the past two and a half decades, right? But it's a different scale. Different scale, operating a different culture and a different system. That's make the challenges even more challenging. First, more effective aquaculture development approaches are required in Africa. We believe the problem is donor subsidize approaches, short-term projects in Africa. We give money, so you dig a pond, we give them some money, they buy some seed, put them and we leave and the ponds go dry. So NGO-led development projects, in my personal opinion, is not very encouraging to improve and sustain the development. Lack of understanding of markets and commercial investment drivers without which we start providing funds for development, for the sake of development. So raise profile of aquaculture as a climate smart protein solution and investment strategy for finance, agriculture and food ministries. You need to influence the governance systems in the country, in the region. Commercial approach involving industry and enterprises are absolutely required if you want to get that seventy-four percent increase in production. Second, enabling policy and regulatory environment for investment. I'm not talking about aquaculture development, investment is lacking. Mixed policy support for aquaculture in national policies, they are not very, throughout the continent, it is not evil. Aquaculture and fisheries not well represented in economic, food, climate and big picture investment policy. All what I'm talking about is, you will realize, we are talking about money, right? No money, no fish. So multi-use spatial planning, tax and import duties on inputs, better data collection, various things are required in order to ensure that the right, right policy environment is created in the region. Investment and finance, small number of bankable aquaculture businesses. Very few bankable businesses in Africa. In this part of the world, you're getting a bankable business is not difficult. The governments are ready to sub-finance, the private sector is ready to finance, the banks are ready to finance and then you can come up with a bankable business because you have the inputs and you have the market. Whereas in Africa, if I won't thousand dollars a loan, I have to give three thousand dollars of collateral. If I have three thousand dollars of collateral, I don't have to go and ask for a hundred thousand dollars. I do without. So that's the environment. So finance solutions for SME producers and emerging aquaculture startups are required. Very, very few startups in Africa. Aquaculture seeds and genetics, I put the word genetics because the, one of the biggest input requirements for proper aquaculture in Africa is a seed. Seed is available, but no good quality seed, right? Lack of accessible quality fish seed, fish fingering demand will grow in Africa, increasing from two to two point five billion fish per year in two thousand twenty to eight billion by twenty thirty. We are talking about, if you want to get to that seventy-five percent, if you want to get that ten percent increase, you need eight billion fry by twenty thirty, right? A much, a huge increase in numbers. Genetics improvement programs are in Africa, zero, none, proper. They try to bring genetics to the countries, but the policies are different. So it's not necessarily that you can bring everything as you, as you wish. Some countries, yes, comes countries, no. But whatever you bring, the quality goes down in a couple of years because there's no proper management. Fish fingering, oh, sorry, and distribution systems, satellite hatcheries, you name it, you know, sort of many things are really lacking. There's a, a big space for improved genetics in Africa. We, world fish and the Gates Foundation brought gift tilapia from Penang to Nigeria three years ago. The third generation is being now disseminated and being produced in ten different states in Nigeria. You can see sixty days less feed and management for the new gift compared to the old variety. So small holders are really, really happy to see that and there is a demand being generated for a gift-based small holder industry in Africa. Feeds, of course, forty percent of feed was still imported into Africa, imported to Africa from outside. Twenty-six from corporate feed companies. By twenty thirty, five million tons. By twenty thirty, five million tons will be needed in Africa and the business as usual scenario. So if we are talking about still continue to increase fifty percent of that, there's a lot of feed. There are new mills coming up, there's a new mill came up in Uganda this year, there's a new mill coming up in Nigeria, there are mills in Zambia, Kenya, Egypt but it's extremely costly because there is no way that you can transport fish to the bush. The transportation and the distribution channels are very, very limited. Therefore, the price goes up like that. So what happens is after your harvest, when you put some fish in the pond again for your next cycle, you have money, you start buying the, 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 the commercial feed and within couple of months you realize, oh, I don't have enough money, so I started grinding my own feed at. So there is no consistency in feeding, there is no consistency in feed management, there is no consistency in feed supply in Africa. So expand feed production capacity, make feed affordable to small holders and now we are negotiating and discussing with few major feed producers, major feed producers, is there any, anything between homemade feed and commercial feed? We are only talking about either homemade or commercial. Is anything in between? We don't know, we are thinking. Aquarium Animal Health, I don't need to say anything. Andy made a big case but Andy, that case we need to move to Africa. In, you remember what happened in two thousand eighteen in Ghana and I think it's happening as you always say, without knowing, we don't see it. You ask how much fish you have in the pond? Oh, I have enough fish in the pond so I can extend my house, I can get another room. So you harvest and you realize you cannot get even a room, you probably have to pay some loans back even if you have not enough money. The record-keeping is absolutely not good and you don't even know what level of, of the production and productivity in ponds. So we believe ISKNV, tilapia, lake virus, streps, various bacteria, they are being, if I say, not across the board but in pockets, have really costed a, a lot of production losses. There is ample room for aquatic animal health improvement in Africa. We are not even talking about vaccines. There are three, four companies, large corporate companies use certain types of vaccines. Some vaccine producers are working in Africa but unfortunately, small holders don't have the access or the affordability to do that. We've been talking about this, we've been designing things and they are still on the drawing board. I think there is ample room for introducing something again, like what we hear from Arun today, you know, sort of, you know, something and from Dongha, you know, sort of something affordable, something accessible for small holders in Africa. As I said, I don't know how to farm fish. So technical and business services skills are required. I always believe and I hope before I end my aquaculture career, I will be able to bridge Asia and Africa much more stronger than it is now. We are working with the Gates Foundation. Gates Foundation is extremely interested in bridging Africa and Asia for aquaculture. Perhaps the Future Fish might be the conduit which will bring technology from Asia, expertise from Asia to Africa and take Africans to Asia to improve their knowledge and capacity. I think it's not going to be expensive, it's going to be much cheaper than sending someone up north. So the South-South can do, India, China, Asia and need support for Africa and I think that is something that we should all work towards and mentoring and providing support and help, help. We are still not on digital in Africa. We talk about all sorts of things, machines, machine learning, digitizing. In Africa, not really. So we need to infuse these ideas and I think we have the capacity to do that, we have the passion to do it and I believe it will happen slowly but it will be a painful exercise. Gender equity, again, if you take aquaculture value chain, the post-harvest value chain is very much women gender, sort of based. In Africa, fifty-five to sixty percent of the post-harvest sector is managed by women. Probably the same in Africa, I guess because women are more involved in. But nonetheless, in Asia, women are also involved in production whereas in Africa, no. And I think that is an issue which we need to address. My last slide, I think. Small-scale actors dominate the number of households engaged across the aquaculture systems. Private investment flow, large aquaculture enterprises. We have positive examples of the opportunities of corporate sector working with the small holders. We always tell the corporate sector, don't get scared of the small holders. Small holders are not a problem but an opportunity. Work with them, join hands with them, the industry will thrive.
Thank you, Dr. Rohana for the wonderful presentation. He has clearly picturedized how Africa needs a lot of investment from the Asian side also. Some of the solutions he was specifically mentioning about the Asian giants who can look into Africa as a potential opportunity rather than a challenge. I remember our father of nation, Mahama Gandhi ji always tells about the talisman whom we should look upon before taking any decision. The weakest man we should be keeping in our mind before taking any decision. So probably Africa is not the weak personality. Dr. Subba Singh indicated that it is a potential of opportunities and great inspirational talk by Dr. Rohana. Thank you for this expertise from Africa sharing into the Asian giants and probably this will invite lot of interest among the Asian investors who can look into Africa also. Thank you for the wonderful lecture. I passively would like to say sorry that my flight is at nine o'clock so I had to move. There is a heavy traffic, that's what Dr. Kuldi was indicating to me. Thank you for the opportunity, thank you the organizers. It was wonderful listening to the disease sessions as well as the aquaculture shrimp as well as fin fish. Thank you for the opportunity and rest of the session I leave it to the hands of our Madam Celia Pita to take it forward. Thank you.
Now, Dr. Rohana is open for your questions, comments. What he showed us is that there's a possibility for, for this continent.
Sorry for the interruption, ma'am. Very nice presentation, sir. I, I was just, you know, wanted to know what's the Asian entrepreneurs doing in Africa? Is there, what is the amount of contribution from the Asian entrepreneurs? Like people from India or maybe Sri Lanka, I don't know if they are, if they are into aquaculture business there.
We, we, yes, we can see Asian expertise in African aquaculture. The largest tilapia farm in Nigeria is managed by a group of Indians, right? And same in many countries, you can see the Asian expertise is used in Africa but joint ventures are lacking. I think moving a person from Asia to Africa to give the know-how and to run a company is not going to help to get that seventy-five percent increase and that ten million additional fish. We need franchise, we need proper, proper corporate franchise partnerships with, we need more investment. Asia has money, invest in Africa and that's where the winner, you can't, anything you make, you sell in Africa, they have incredible market potential. So it's not only technology. We, we started a program with AIT and Dongha knows and I think the, some of the Nigerian students are now working enough in AIT and we are trying to bring, you know, give them more tailor-made training programs, what we call formal and informal education and I think more and more and I, 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 I see more and more Asian people in all in Africa
I, I think this is not a question but an observation. I think, I think Africa is really looking at Asia as something, you know, because Asia-Pacific in particular has already reached the peak of aquaculture production and Africa is looking at it as some, something that they can emulate in, you know, developing their aquaculture. But my experience in terms of aquatic animal health, when I first had a discussion with the African region, is that they are looking at what Asia is already doing. You know, they want this, they want that and I thought, no, Asia took so many years, Asia-Pacific took so many years to achieve this and Africa should have to start somewhere at the bottom. Then they develop slowly. So what is happening is, I, I think they want to get what, the technology that we have here in Asia, apply it there but they don't have the capacity to do it. I think that's one, one, one of the problem that I, I see, at least for the aquatic animal health. So we were able to establish aquatic animal health network in both the southern and northern Africa but it did not succeed. I, I asked the Wawa representative, what's the status of the network and he said it's not pushing well because as I told them, you, you have to, yeah, you, you can look up at Asia-Pacific on aquaculture production, you can learn from us but don't try to, to repeat what we had. We struggled a lot, we faced a lot of problems before we reach this kind of status. So I think there should be something, you know, teach them the basics first and then let them grow slowly. I think that's, that's what I want to tell.
Thank you. Yes, certainly. I, I think the, the, that's why I said, you, you need a, you need to change, you need a main transformative, you know, sort of a transformation into particularly into a thinking. It's not a, it's not, the development thinking has to change into financial and commercial thinking. If it is not, if there is no profit, there is no sustainability, then it's not going to work. So change your mindset, change your giving thinking to lending thinking.
Some more comments or, and questions for Dr. Rohana? I'm sure you're already thinking of opportunities on how to help Africa leapfrog its production. It's not a copy and paste thing but Africa is lucky because it's already going to learn from us who has paid a lot of tuition fee in, in this business. Any more questions for Dr. Rohana? Okay, if there are no more questions for Dr. Rohana, we thank him for his excellent introduction to aquaculture in Africa.